This meeting of the Gadsden City Council now come to order and the Chair calls on City Clerk Iba Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Avery?
Here.
Eccles?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present, the meeting is open for business. Ask everyone to stand. David Lawson will lead the invocation. Remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Lord, we're thankful for this day. We're thankful for the opportunity to come out and serve. We ask that you continue to have your hands as a source of comfort for those who have been ravaged by storms. We ask that you continue to, continue to bless the workers and the volunteers who are trying to help in the relief effort, not just here, but afar in flood-ridden areas. We ask that you continue to have your hands involved at all levels of our government, continue to bless and keep and, keep and safekeeping our troops who are still out on the battlefield, fighting for freedom, for the peace-loving world. We will be ever grateful to give you the honor and praise. These things we ask in the name of your Son Jesus. Amen.
Amen. I declare the allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
War ego.
Roll tide. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in the council meeting on May the 3rd.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of April the 29th through May the 5th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation, Mayor?
Yes. I'd like to ask Reverend Preston Nix, President, and Jan Smith, Executive Director of the Etowah Community Food Bank, to come up, please. Whereas May 14th has been designated for this one-day food drive, which is the largest one-day food drive in the nation. Etowah County Community Food Bank is in its 29th year of serving citizens of Etowah County. Reverend Preston Nix, President, and Janelle Smith, Executive Director of the Food Bank, and Jay Pruitt, President of the NALC Association of Letter Carriers Branch 1047, are announcing its annual Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive. Gadsden City, East Gadsden, Alabama City, Atala City, and rural carriers will be participating in this event. The NALC will donate all food received from this area to the Etowah Community Food Bank, where it will be distributed throughout our agencies such as Etowah Baptist Mission, the Love Center, and the Salvation Army. The Etowah Community Food Bank is a united way agency, and we are proud to have served over 15,000 people in 2010. The Food Bank is a vital part of our community, and we'd like to thank the City of Gadsden, Mayor Guyton, and the City Council for supporting us and helping us serve the city of Gadsden and Etowah County. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Sherman Guyton, Mayor of the City of Gadsden, to hereby proclaim May 14th, 2011, as Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive Day, which is the largest one-day drive in the nation.
Would you all like to say so?
I just want to say thank you for this, and it really means a lot to the Food Bank. We've been serving Etowah County for 29 years. We have a wonderful program, and we feel like we're a vital part of our community, and we thank you all for helping us get through this year, and we'll be doing our best to help tornado victims and help others in our county.
Certainly, we want to thank Mayor and the Council and all for what you do, trying to help the people in the city of Gadsden as well as Etowah County. We've been doing this 29 years. I started at Good Year. I've been on the board 25 years doing this, so I know how important it is to feed the hunger in times like this, and not to mention all the tragedy we've had all around us in Birmingham and right around, around in the south side and other places and all that. So we thank you all, and ask that you bring a sack by, put out something for the postman to bring to us. Can't we do that, Brother Ben?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. And we have a new location. We're going to be located at the new location that the Etowah County Community Service used to be, and that is, I think that's 4...
109? Nice Street.
Nice Street. We're moving into that building because the old Sears building, you know, they're closing it down, and we're getting ready to move from there for the new location to receive the food and everything. So that's where we'll be for a while, hopefully, until we find something maybe more feasible to accommodate the people here in Gadsden and Etowah County. Thank you.
I'd like to ask, Matthew Schroeder is the Director of the Dixie Abate of Alabama, which is a legislative, education, and safety motorcycle organization. This organization is a little over one and a half years old, to help to make a difference for motorcycling community in the future. Whereas motorcycles are increasingly used as a regular means of transportation, the motorcycle is an energy-efficient vehicle that reduces fuel consumption, traffic, and parking congestion. The motorcycle is an important form of transportation for commuting, touring, and recreation. As a matter of safety, it is necessary to develop appropriate driving habits to handle these vehicles on roadways. Over the past 10 years, motorcycle fatalities have increased 150 percent as reported in United States Department of Transportation's Fatality Analysis Report. To prevent injuries and deaths on the roadways, motorcyclists and motorists must be vigilant in their efforts to share the road and ensure the safety of everyone. Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month raises public awareness for a lifetime of safe motorcycle riding. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Sherman Guyton, Mayor of the City of Gadsden, to hereby proclaim May 2011 Motorcycle Awareness Month in the City of Gadsden. Would you like to say if you want? Yes, please. I'd like to thank, on behalf of myself and Dixie Bay of Alabama, I'd like to thank the Mayor, David. I appreciate this, and just thank you very much. This means a lot to Dixie Bay and the state of Alabama. On a personal note, I'd just like to add that growing up in Alabama City, the Mill Village, just about everybody had a motor, and I always was after my daddy to get me a motor, especially a Cushman Eagle, but he would not do it. And I said, "Everybody in the Mill Village has a motorcycle except me." No, I said, "Everybody has one." He said, "No, they don't." And I said, "Who doesn't?" He said, "You don't." And you're not going to get one.
Hey, Mayor, you forgot to, you forgot to tell everyone an important part about that. Everybody in the Mill Village except you did have a motorcycle probably, but half of them didn't run.
Unfinished business. There is an ordinance amending City Code Section 6-44 to conform to the State Code types of ABC licenses. This ordinance was presented last week for the first reading. It adds special event retail and warehouse licenses. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
There is an ordinance amending City Code Section 74-91 to provide for special retail liquor license. This ordinance was presented last week for the first reading. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
9 through 12, this is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or favor of resolutions assessing nuisance abatement liens against property. This is for grass cutting that has already been performed. We have four locations. I'm going to read the addresses and names. Anyone who wishes to speak about any of these may come forward. 207th Street North in District 2, $496, State of Alabama Property Tax Division. Timothy and Crystal Collins. 321 Roslin Drive in District 2, $226, State of Alabama Property Tax Division. And Betty J. Robinson, Brothel. 1411 Fourth Avenue in District 3, $211, State of Alabama Property Tax Division. David K. Green. 316 South 7th Street in District 4, $361, State of Alabama Property Tax Division. And Mustafa El-Gal, something. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to any of these resolutions?
Mustafa who?
I don't know, they ran it all together. I wonder if that's supposed to be two words.
No, that's one word. But that's okay.
Anyone wish to speak in favor of it? Chair will entertain a motion to adopt all four resolutions.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all four resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution disapproving issuance of a Class 1 retail liquor license for Avery Social Club located at 921B Tuscaloosa Avenue. The Police Chief and Zoning Administrator have both recommended disapproval. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Mr. President, I'd like to, to ask that we, I'd like to make a motion that we amend this for approval.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
It's still a public hearing.
Yeah, we'd like to see if anyone wants to speak first before we take that.
We need to do the public hearing first, Roger.
Yes.
Continue.
Okay. Is there anyone who would, both in disapproval, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anybody wish to speak in favor of it? Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
We already have that.
Huh?
Oh, no.
No.
Got a vote on it first.
They got a motion on the floor. That has been seconded. Would you take the vote?
Okay.
Roll call, please.
We have a motion to amend the resolution to indicate approval rather than disapproval. So to vote on the amendment, I will start with Roll. Harris?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Avery?
Stand.
Eccles?
Yes.
Stewart?
No.
Cannon?
Yes.
Reed?
No.
Motion carries to amend the resolution to approval.
Okay, where do we stand now?
Then you would need a motion to adopt as amended.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt it as amended.
Second.
Okay. Take a second, take a second, okay.
We do have a motion in a second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, it's my understanding that the primary sticking point relative to the original disapproval of this, of issuing this license was the distance from a nearby church. And, and I think if I've, if I understand correctly, we have some history with, with issuing exceptions to that standard. So, so again, you know, again, I've, the, the motion to, to amend was based on the history of us issuing exceptions to this.
Mr. President, I would say if the Council is going to engage in disregarding the ordinance, the Council also needs to repeal the ordinance.
Repeal the ordinance, what ordinance?
The ordinance about 30 feet from a church, 300 feet from the church. I think you opened up a can of worms here that we shouldn't do. The ordinance says that you can't have a liquor license 300 feet from the church, and this is, this is less than 300 feet. To my knowledge, since I've been on the Council, I don't, we hadn't made any exception to, as I can remember. So if you've been told that we made exceptions, not since I've been here, and it's been 13 years. I think you're making a mistake to do that.
Mr. Attorney.
Because if you, if you let a few feet here, then the next one's going to want 25 feet, and the first thing you know, you're going to have one next door to a church. So I'm asking you, please don't, don't vary from this 300 feet from the church door.
You through?
Yeah.
I just want to ask, Roger, since you've been here, have that, to your knowledge, have that been waived?
The, the ordinance itself was changed at one point.
That's not my question.
So, you know, that was to apply to everyone else. I don't think the ordinance was ever disregarded in approving and disapproving.
You don't think?
I don't recall a time.
Oh, okay.
My memory is subject to being faulty like anyone else's, but I'm...
Well, I, I can assure you that, that this won't, this won't be the first exception. So if we've, if I was given incorrect information relative to exceptions, then we'll raise this again. So, so the question is, has there been exceptions, I guess, for a second time?
I know one particular case in, that I had in my district, they were eight feet, but they wanted to open up a, had a little gift shop there. They had, wanted to have wine tasting thing there so they could sell wine. They were within eight feet of, too close to the church, eight feet, and it was turned down, of course. It was, I think we've stayed pretty close with this 300 feet, the best, best amount I think.
Yeah.
And I think it's, we start varying it, making exceptions, and then here we go.
Well, I don't personally have anything against the person on here.
Oh, I don't either. I just think the 300 feet is something we should stick with.
But if we, if we do go ahead and pass this, which is what it looks like we are going to do, then I'm with City Attorney. We need to go back and repeal this thing.
You have to, you have to come before them on Friday. Roger, since the state disapproved it...
State, state hadn't disapproved it?
I understand the ABC Board did turn it down.
That's not true.
Not true.
They, they wouldn't do anything until after the city council.
After the city council.
All right.
Some more false information.
Well, I still want to finish what I was saying, and I'm going to say it. If we pass it, that's fine, but we need to go back and amend that part in some way.
How close you want to go to a church, next door?
That's the whole point. I have no earthly idea.
Let me help with that discussion. I'm not at all in favor of, of creating a track record of exceptions. If, if we have not already headed down that path, then I don't know that we need to start here. So again, once we do the additional research, or at least let me make this personal, once I do the additional research, if we have not already started towards making exceptions, then we won't start with this one, at least not as far as I'm concerned.
You can always bring it back up.
So I'll bring it back up again if that's the case.
Roger, what is the state law dealing with churches?
State law doesn't specify anything like that.
Okay.
They do allow local governments to set reasonable limits on that. If you have too large a limit that basically prohibits any establishment in town, certainly that would not be the kind of limit that would be appropriate.
So the state law do not have a set aside?
They, they have something regarding where state alcoholic beverage control stores could go, but not anything regulating where a particular licensee could be.
Okay.
Okay, where are we now?
Roll, roll.
Okay. Should it be a voice vote or roll call?
Please.
Okay, this is to adopt the resolution approving the license as amended. Councilman Reed?
No.
Cannon?
Yes.
Stewart?
No.
Eccles?
Stand.
Avery?
Stand.
Williams?
Yes.
Harris?
No.
Motion fails to carry to grant the license.
Thank you.
Okay, so it didn't pass?
It did not pass.
Mr. Avery, what were you saying about?
What was the vote again? What was I saying about?
Two and two.
Three.
The, the vote that I took was to approve the, to adopt the resolution approving the license, and we had two no, two yeses, three nos, and two abstentions. So there were not enough votes to adopt the, the resolution.
If I voted, it would have mattered.
What did you vote?
I'm Mr. Stand.
So who voted no? Who else voted no?
You don't vote it.
I did.
Oh, you voted no?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
We, we've, we've just set a lot of discussion about not opening up an entity or a situation that we may come back and, and have to amend, not in keeping with what we did, we've done. The motion to change, to amend, was based upon information that we had received, that was received, that that may not be true, and Mr. David Williams will bring this back up again after further investigation has been done on it.
He can't bring it up again.
You can't. You can't bring it up because you look like...
Mr. Williams can't bring it up again.
Okay, then I can bring it up again then, and I will bring it up again.
And again, I know I said there's probably three different ways, but, you know, let me be clear. You know, I'm not, I'm not at all for watering down this ordinance. I think it's important, if, if there are incidents in the past where we've, where we've skirted it and offered up exceptions, then I don't, I don't think we need to, I don't think we need to treat this one any different. So I hope I'm wrong. I hope the information that I was given is wrong, and I hope that we have not, that we've not skirted it and...
It was obvious the information you were giving by the state not approving was wrong.
Mr. City Attorney, could I request information on whether in the past we've made exceptions to this rule or not, to this ordinance?
I will look into...
Thank you.
If anyone is aware of things that, I wish I could...
I'll give you a couple.
That's what we need.
Okay. Okay. Number 14 is authorizing agreement with American Bass Anglers. This is for the city's sponsored fishing tournament on Saturday, May the 14th, in the amount of $1,500. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
15 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Crescent Moon Entertainment. This is for entertainment of Nash Vegas All-Stars at the Amphitheater on Friday, July the 1st. The amount is $3,000. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
This is the first of several free concerts that will be going on at the amphitheater through the summer, so it's, it's a free entertainment, should be good. Late discussion there.
Is elected to vote?
Yeah.
Okay, new businesses, are any new business?
Mr. President, I have, excuse me, I have one, and this is a legal department document number 2011-169. I would like a motion to amend this resolution as it reads, Parks and Recreation requests consideration, I'm sorry, a resolution declaring tornado relief benefit at Nakalula Falls with $1 off each ticket sold going to Etowah County Unit of Red Cross to help those affected by tornadoes. The amendment reads for the weekend of May 21st and 22nd, I would like to amend the, the resolution to read also the weekend of May 28th and 29th.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to amend the resolution to add the additional dates, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Amendment passes.
I move for that consideration today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
Move.
Second.
Okay.
Any discussion?
This is to, I think we made it clear, this, this is to take a dollar from the admission to the Falls and give it to the Red Cross for the tornado relief victims.
The original, the original resolution was for just one weekend, and I think the mayor, both the mayor and the Council all agree that it'd be beneficial to have a second weekend of activity.
Also, while we're talking about relief efforts, one of my constituents was upstairs a few minutes ago and mentioned the fact that they're looking at having some type of concert, and they want to do it out at the Carver Square area. And we'll talk to a band now, we're looking at getting a band, we don't have the date yet, as soon as he can clear up on his band playing, then we're going to have a band playing out there, and then we're going to ask people in the community to bring an unperishable item to that concert. So there's going to be some other relief efforts coming, and I thank Mr. Harris for coming up with that, and, and hopefully, Mr. Avery's band will still play even though we didn't do his license, but hopefully he'll still play for us.
That's Mr. Melvin Harris.
Yeah, Melvin Harris, yeah, who, who came up with that, yeah. Melvin Harris.
Okay. Department reports, board?
We got a vote, right? We on the...
We had voted on that? Okay, let's vote.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution as amended, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Okay. Any other new business? Department reports, committees, boards, are there any? Remarks by the mayor and the council?
You got a department.
We got one, Congress. I don't think John need to come, because...
I'm coming.
I got a list.
I'm John Ashley with Community Development. I just wanted to give a quick update on the grass and the nuisance abatement situation. Since April 25th, we've sent out 425 letters, so we are trying to get out to the homeowners and property owners about the overgrown grass. This week, a contractor's up in the Tidmore Bend area, Oakley Estates area, he's been in East Gadsden the last week or so. By the end of the week, we're hoping to move to Alabama City, Lakefront, Wilkinson, Lookout, rounding that area. So we are trying to make some headway, but as you well know, we've got one crew that does this, and everybody wants us there today, and it's just virtually impossible. So I do ask the public as well as councilmen to kind of indulge us a little patience. We're trying to get to these things as quickly as we can. Also, on the lots, a couple of issues I want to kind of get out to the public as well. Some of the vacant lots, we're starting to run into problems with people parking their cars and their boats and everything else on them. I don't really know the legal aspect of this, and it's something I probably need to get with Roger on, but we don't have time to get out and mow the grass, run around, knock on people's doors, get them to move these cars and boats. I realize a lot of the lots are state property, but in a sense, I would think that they're trespassing by parking these vehicles on these lots, and it's not only causing a problem, but it's, it's hindering us from doing a job when we're on a time-situated scale here trying to move as quickly as we can. So I would like to ask the public to kind of help and watch out, and if you see us in your area, and if you've got a car or something parked on one of these vacant lots that's got the grass real high, please come out and move it so we can get through these things as quickly as we can. Also, on some of these houses and lots, there's been a lot of foreclosures. I want to remind the, the banks that are in this area, I know a lot of them are not, but if you're in this area, if you're a realty company trying to sell property for somebody, please let them know that they do still need to keep this property maintained as long as they're connected to it. That would be well appreciated. Also, if you have any vacant lots next to you, and you know they're stayed on, you know that we've blasted it time and time, we will try to walk you through how to acquire this property. this property. Um, I've set up a meeting, uh, this week with the mayor to go over some properties that we have, uh, state properties and some city properties that we're going to try to, uh, entice some contractors to take a look at as far as maybe taking this property and doing something with it to, uh, enhance the communities and to get it out of our hands from having to mow it. Uh, and last but not least, if you have something, don't hesitate to give us a call, uh, it's two five six five four nine four five three two, uh, and we can tell you the status on it if we already are working the property, and if we're not, we'll look at it and get a letter out on it immediately and go from there.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Would you tell me again what you said about the, um, the grass cutting, not the lots, but the edges, uh, streets? Did, did you mention that?
That falls under public works.
That falls under public works. Yeah, we, we do the, we do the individual and privately owned lots, however, there, and it's a good point, I'm glad you brought this up, there are some instances where there's, uh, uh, in neighborhoods, there's sidewalks, and a lot of times, there'll be a strip in front of somebody's house that's maybe two foot wide between the sidewalk and the strip. Well, they may cut their property and keep it beautiful, and they may leave that little strip, but technically, every property owner is required by city ordinance to cut the property all the way to the street, so we would also like to ask that, that people continue to do that in an effort to, uh, keep the areas looking as well as we possibly can.
Thank you for pointing, I have a case.
Thanks a lot.
Councilman Harris, I will tell you that Friday, I did see that crew, those, uh, three tractors over in Alabama City, they was working close to the Boys Club.
Okay.
So you might want to get with Ty Jackson, he's over the grass cutting crew of Public Works.
Okay.
He can tell you exactly what it's going to move to next.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, remarks by the mayor and the council. Mayor, you want to start this morning?
Yeah, I, I would like to just comment a little bit about the, the tornadoes and all. We've, uh, been trying to help out, we were very fortunate and blessed, we didn't have much damage here except for a few trees and limbs, and we had a crew out towards Silver Lakes, uh, across four thirty, four, four thirty-one there toward, going towards Webster's Chapel. Uh, we worked out there for two or three days to help them with the trash and, and the limbs and everything with our loader trucks, and then we were down in Oatchee, I think, for just about the whole week, uh, helping out down there. The mayor had called, and, uh, I've, I've got some, uh, names and stuff, I didn't bring it down here with me, but next week I'll talk a little bit about, he sent us a letter, and, and some of the residents did too, about our crew, about working down there, and how good, good of a job they did. And yesterday, the governor flew into the airport, I met with him out there about twenty minutes, he was going on a tour for the rest of the afternoon on all the places surrounding us here, including Oatchee and Webster Chapel and Happy Hollow and, and all those places to take a look, and he was telling me that FEMA has been working really good with them. Uh, they've had a couple of little issues, but he did remind them that they work for him now, not the federal government. So anyway, but, uh, I think, you know, it's been really a big outpouring of, of help and volunteerism, and I think that's great, because you just think about getting up the next morning, you don't have a house, you don't have a car, you don't have any clothes, you don't have any food, you know, I mean, that's, that's just really, really a bad issue, plus the people that's been killed, that's even worse. So, uh, but we, we've been trying to help all we can, and we appreciate all of what our guys are doing.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to encourage everyone, school's about to be out now, and our kids are going to need to take advantage of every program that we have for them, uh, this summer, and I want to encourage our parents to take advantage of the summer reading program at the library area. Uh, it's very important that we keep them, uh, keep them matriculating, you know, throughout the summer so that they won't, uh, you know, be that rusty when we start again next fall. But, uh, take advantage of those programs at the library area and support them. Also, uh, the library will be having a rededication this, um, Friday from ten to twelve, and Johnny will, uh, elaborate on that a little more, the Alabama City branch of the library, I'm sorry, Alabama City branch of the library will be having a program, a rededication program, uh, this, this coming Friday from ten to twelve. I'd like to encourage everybody to come out and, uh, be a part of that, uh, celebration. Uh, District One, we will meet, um, Monday, Monday at, uh, six o'clock at East Gedston Community Center. I look forward to seeing all of you out there, if you're not District One, then come on out anyway, share information. The, um, we've been talking about the summer program for the Recreation Parks and Recreation Centers, uh, having them open for extended hours. I have a commitment, uh, today to have Carver Center, Walnut Park, and the East Gedston Recreation Center open on Saturday starting the first of June. Now, if we're going to have these facilities open, I'm going to have to encourage you, now that doesn't mean that we might not open some more, but that's our starting point, that's our starting point. We may, I, I'm, my hopes are that every recreation center will be open, but it, it's an issue of, it's a personnel issue, and we're trying to work through those things. Parks and Recreation is working with us to try to get that done, and, uh, but support those programs in order for me, us to be able to, to expand the program onto other centers. Uh, they're not going to expand it if we don't support them, so please support those programs. The, um, summer nutrition program will start, uh, on some sites, start, uh, June, uh, June first. Uh, so, uh, the back of the sheet has it, but I'm going to ask that this be posted on the, um, on, on Comcast so that you be able to see all the locations of the, um, two thousand eleven summer nutrition sites, uh, the dates, uh, and the times that they are going to offer the nutrition, and the sites, we will do that. Also, uh, Parks and Recreation is presenting Zero Meth, Parks and Recreation Three-on-Three Summer Basketball League. This is Tuesday and Saturday evenings beginning June the eighteenth, and of course, there, uh, there's information that will also be available to you on Comcast. The applications, uh, let's see, these are age brackets fourteen and eighteen and nineteen and up. Applications and fifty-dollar entry fee can be turned into the Gedston Parks and Recreation Office. Uh, please, uh, participate in this program if, if you, if you're interested in, in these, in these activities. There will be an organizational meeting on May twenty-fifth at the Coliseum at four thirty. So if you're interested in having a basketball league, you would need to be at the Coliseum on May twenty-fifth at four thirty, uh, to express your interest and to get more information. The other thing that I have is, uh, sort of a personal thing, uh, come on, come out to the Great Burnoff, I think I mentioned this, uh, the burnt, the Great Burnoff that, uh, we're going to have at the CME on, uh, on, uh, Mar, May twenty-eighth. So if you think you can burn, you need to go see Pat and go out there and, and enroll and, and try to win that first prize money that they're going to give. Now, this is the first time that they're having this, they want to try to, if this is a success, want to try to make this a ne, a, 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 a citywide event on an annual basis, uh, to be held at one of the Parks and Recreation Centers in Gedston, but support it, and let's see how we do with it. And, and please, uh, again, don't, don't forget those persons who have lost so much, uh, during the ravages of the tornadoes that hit us, uh, please remember them and, and do whatever you can to support those people. Thank you.
Man?
Yeah, I want to kind of reiterate what the mayor said, but I want to let the city employees that did the work in, uh, down the country, they did a fabulous job, and to me, they came right back, mayor, and, uh, kept us going locally. I don't think we missed a leg. So I'm proud of them, I guarantee you, they're, they're good folks to have with you. Uh, along those lines, somebody said last week, again, just before First Friday, he said, "There's nothing to do in Gedston," I hadn't figured that one out, goodness, not a Moses. First Friday, how many people did we have there? That thing's got a mind to be thrown, mayor. It's just moving forward every week, it's unbelievable. But the crawfish boil and the, and the duck race and the fishing and, and people just need to pick up something from Parks and Rec or the Gedston Times and see what's going on, and quit saying there's nothing to do. Because if you ain't got nothing to do, you asleep, something bad's going on there. Uh, this morning, Public Safety Committee did meet with representatives from, uh, Mountain View Hospital. I think it was a really good meeting, and, uh, I'm looking forward to a much better relationship through the police, the fire, and the residents up there. I appreciate y'all coming, I really do. So.
Thank you, Mr. President. I then want to announce tonight, uh, Tuesday, May the tenth, that five-thirty at Banks Park, we'll be having our District Six meeting down there tonight, so y'all come out and voice your concerns tonight at five-thirty at Banks Park Activities Center, a new one down there. I also do want to talk about May Day at Alabama City Library, it'll be May the thirteenth from ten to twelve. The Alabama City Library actually opened on May the thirteenth, nineteen thirty-eight, if my math's right, that's makes that library sixty-three years old. We'll have, it'd be put on the list of Alabama historical places, that'll be May the thirteenth from ten to twelve, we'll have food down there, we'll have unveiling of a plaid, uh, General Forest, I mean, the Gedston City Middle School Band or Choral, someone will be down there singing, we have the first block blocked off from Megan Boulevard down to Sanson for those couple hours, so it'll be safe for everyone to go cross streets to the gazebo, I think all the singing is going to be at the gazebo. Uh, I know this next, what I'm fixing to tell you next, is going to be confusing some people, we met with the Public Works Director during pre-council today, and we talked about storm debris and people that got stuff torn up at their house that lives in, that lives in the city of Gedston. If you had a tree that fell in the city of Gedston and you did not have a contractor, I repeat, you did not have a contractor to cut that tree up, a licensed contractor, the city of Gedston will be able to get that tree off the side of the road for you if you pile it out there. It's got a big cut in, uh, I think, three-foot length and ten inches in diameter, I think it is. If a church group helps you cut it, we will pick it up. If your neighbor helps you cut it, we will pick it up. We do not pick up any trees that has been cut by licensed tree surgeon.
Paid.
Paid.
Yeah.
Hope I didn't confuse everybody, but that's, that's the way it's going to be. Uh, so if you have any questions or concerns, you can call the Public Works Department at two five six five four nine four seven oh three. Uh, I wanted to get the director up here today, but he had something he had to do, he couldn't come. Maybe we can get the mayor up, get the director up here next week and talk about what we can pick up and can't pick up, about that. Uh, that's all I have.
Can I make one addition? Uh, Johnny was talking about it, that is the Alabama City Library, but it's also the Horton Washam Alabama City Library, that's the name.
David?
Thank you, Mr. President. Do, do want to echo what's been said regarding, uh, the, the city and its contribution to some of the cleanup efforts, uh, relative to the, to the disaster. Our, our city employees have done an excellent job responding and, uh, and, uh, and, and supporting folks in, uh, in other areas as it relates to the cleanup. Um, and, uh, thanks to the mayor and the department heads for allowing the folks to support and dispatching where needed. Um, one other announcement, uh, Community Action, uh, banquet will be Thursday, uh, this Thursday, May twelfth at six P.M., uh, at the Senior Activity Center, so I want to encourage all of those who, uh, who can to go out and support that event. That's all I have.
Well, Yana, your math is wrong, it's seventy-three years, it's seventy-sixty-three. Okay. Well, I didn't have my glasses on, and, you know, I was trying to do it there, so...
Well, it's also ten inches and forty-eight inches long.
And Johnny, like me, uh, he went to night school, it's daytime, so...
He was correct on the...
He can't do his math in the day.
It's three feet and ten inches.
That's what you get when you misplace your glasses.
It's amazing that.
Actually, I yielded my time to, uh, Councilman Harris, so I have nothing to say.
Yep. I think we all did.
Very well deserved.
I, I just want to remind, uh, people, uh, when they're bringing those non-perishable items, uh, and, and talking with the people, uh, don't forget the volunteers, they need some snacks, cookies, potato chips, and stuff like that too, while they're out there working, so, uh, remember bringing some of those things when you bring your non-perishable items, that's all.
The, uh, Alabama Power Company has, uh, given us a, uh, grant so that we can have bank fishing in the park down behind, uh, the, uh...
Hampton Inn.
Hampton Inn, and there'll be a ribbon cutting for Bank Fishing Park at one-thirty today, and the public's invited, so come on down and with a hook. This press conference and the, uh, city council is adjourned.